Uh, items of business is approval of the October 9th, 2012 meeting. But we do not have a motion.
I'm hoping that we approve and... One second.
It's been made in seconded all favors, I oppose. Events are approved. Um, I guess we'll go into the business items, but first order of business is PC 2012-028, Discount Drug Mart Site Plan Approval. Rob, you can walk us through that, please.
Sure, this is a request from David Howell, the architect and agent for property owner, Mr. Eric Parnell of the Fish Creek Road Property Level C. For your approval of the site plan, committed construction of retail store at 3956 Fish Creek Road. Site is located on the west side of Fish Creek Road, south of the Oregon Trail Shopping Center, and is owned by C3 Community Retail. Retail stores are committed by right of the district, subject to site plan approval. The 4-point area of property contains a single-family dwelling that will be removed this part of the project. The adjacent properties are as follows: C3 to the north, R3 to the west and south, and RB residential business to the east across Fish Creek Road. The evidence opposing the vague behavior, current location, Oregon Trail Shopping Center. We construct a new standalone store on the site. The proposed store will be 27,000 square feet in area. Will be located kind of 2 feet from Fish Creek Road right away. The proposed building will be constructed with a brick exterior and multiple earth tones. Property will get access from 2 locations off of Fish Creek Road. A total of 111 parking spaces are proposed to be located in the front of the east side and on the north or side of the building. Drive-through windows also proposed to be located on the north side of the store. With a dedicated drive-through lane, including 5 vacant spaces. The drive-through lane is in this area here. And, uh, okay. Uh, there's landscaping, mounting proposed along Fish Creek Road and around the curb road apart now were appropriate. The stormwater for the project will be primarily contained in underground pipes and will be directed east to the stormwater system on Fish Creek Road. So the general stormwater will be during Fish Creek Road stormwater system. A total of 59% of the site of the open space. Um, what doesn't show up on the aerial, but you can see kind of just in a, uh, thing in, uh, here there, there's a gas pipeline that runs diagonally across the property. So what truly contributes to that part of the property is undeveloped. Uh, here a lot of parking over that pipeline, but no buildings placed over that. So again, most of it, so again, that's why more than well over half the site is, uh, will make open space. The, uh, one slight modification, the fire department recommended circulation drive here along the south side. He recommended 24 feet instead of 22, which is on the original plan. And, uh, that would require a variance from the setback from this property. Because this is own residential, a 25-foot setback would require. So the variance would be 2 feet, so a 23-foot setback would be in place. From a staff's point of view, various minimal. Secondly, there's existing trees in this area. And thirdly, there's a driveway here, so no actual residential structures anywhere near this north property line. These are apartment buildings. So again, the drive, apartment line question is right here. And you can see that the driveway for their development, and these are apartment lines. So, from staff's point of view, that variance will just be a bindable. So we would be in support of this proposal with the following conditions: City office approval of landscape plans, city engineers approval of stormwater abandoned plans, fire department approval of approval of the number and location items on-site fire items, and zoning department approval of structural location. Or, 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 uh, for running, uh, install, like, see. A little, a little dark, hard to see the bands of color there. So, uh, again, I think good mind, important that makes me cautious.
Um, if you're not answering any questions from Rob, maybe it's likely to say there's someone who's here to speak on behalf of the owner or the architect. If you can control and be sworn in. I'm speaking at my phone.
Uh, my name is David Howell, the architect for the, uh, OMS 3787, through Ohio.
You have anything to add, Rob, or Scott?
Uh, no, really. As you know, Dr. Mark is in the shopping center there. If I could free standing store, um, which would give them a little, I don't know if there's a building point. Oh, good point. Uh, you can see the store right there, that would be a free standing store right now there. There, it's a little larger store that they have now, and sizes have been increasing a little bit over the years. Uh, it's a, have any more merchandise? We've worked with Rob and, um, as chief architect, he reviewed our drawings, engineer is, um, on the fire department. We do have to resolve a couple of issues with the landscaping here. The, uh, our engineer, um, while we review it, um, then reports and the issues are minor. We're very happy with any of them, so we don't see a problem.
Do you know the drive-through's open 24 hours? Is the store? Five thirty?
Just the hours of the store. It's only hours of the store. It's not a 24-hour store.
There aren't any other questions, you don't plan commission numbers? Is there anyone in the audience that's here to speak to this issue? So you can come forward. Don't you come forward and be sworn in? You need to state your name and address, so you can come. Mr. Howell, please.
I'm Robert Bettelstein. I'm here on behalf of Oregon Trails. I'm a attorney, Cleveland, Ohio. You need my address. 3401 Enterprise Parkway, Suite 210. And that's each one 44122. I did, uh, I was asked to appear on behalf of the Oregon Trails Shopping Center, trucking owners. They were, uh, they had some concerns about this project. Number one, obviously they're losing a tenant and there's already plenty of vacancies in the area. And, uh, they're, uh, they see a lot of retail already in this area and it's not bringing any of the new into the area. We're taking, uh, we're taking a tenant away from an existing entity already there. They also have concerns with traffic flow, with this abundant retail. And, uh, they were, uh, they, they just got the first notice of this on October 31st, the letter stated. And they got the letter on Friday, so they really haven't had a chance to review this project or, or, I don't know what information there is out there. And based on that, they were, they're hoping that they would get a chance to review this before there is a vote.
What traffic concerns do they have?
They're not sure, you know, what, you know, how it affects their property. They, they, they also own this triangular piece of property between, um, to, to, to note. I mean, it's hard to give you what concerns they have when they just found, they, they just got notice of this.
And plan to, uh, parcel it up, you know?
Between the existing, uh, where did, 20 seconds? Right in this piece in there, yeah, I believe it is my understanding, it's owned by the shopping center, the existing shopping center or address.
Correct, same lot. Same lot, same owner.
I was told it was an additional parcel. Okay, I, I'm down just, uh, what I was explaining, that that additional lot was brought, and it's not. But based on, they have, you know, they, they just feel that they're getting, also getting hit with this, and they have no clue about it.
The variance, there's only one variance, right? If you're requesting, you're going to be knowing the progress of the site, with the exception of, of, uh, two, three closer, or three, four closer.
So, so this is conditionally approved, just?
It's actually committed by right, means the retail.
Typically does affect that Oregon Trail.
It's, it means, you know, zoning's the same. In terms of traffic, um, typically the question when it comes to traffic is what sort of improvements would be necessary in the public right of way? In this case, it's already five with a term, including a term length, so I don't know what additional traffic.
You've been telling me how to be sure you're doing with that, because the instructions are all. Pretty open theory there, right? You get 2 curb cuts, there's already one existing curb cut in the house, is that not correct?
Correct.
Do that curb there, you're here.
Yes, there's 2 curb cuts, this is where the existing house curb cut isn't, and the additional one is.
Which, I guess, there's not really, you know, we need a fair justification to deny, really, if they're, if they're, if they're by right. You know, they're not requesting, though, there's one variance that's being requested. It's hard to see how that impacts the Oregon Trail. So, um, I, they asked me to come and put their, uh, their feelings on record, and I'm here doing that. All right, just clearly noted.
I'll use this for a sign. Compared to Walgreen, with the Red Street, CVS, which is the store in Kent Road. This store is pretty ancient and not near the quality of the other stores. I can't wait to go in and explore, frankly.
Probably use it, ever reference it. Uh, is there any other, uh, comments from the audience, or from client vision numbers? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make motion for approval, 2012-028, site plan approval with the conditions stated.
Motion.
Rob, you want to state the conditions for whatever, any variance?
City office approval of landscape plans, city engineer approval of stormwater abandoned plans, fire department approval of the number and location of fire item locations, zoning department approval of structural location, and approval of variance of 114507. We're two for a belief on this suffering setback.
Okay, motion's been made in seconded, any more discussion? And, if you call a roll.
Mr. Spragel?
Yes.
Mr. Colmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
Yes.
Mr. Shadler?
Yes.
Okay, record approved. Your next step is to meet before the planning committee with council. This will be on your agenda for, this will be, and what other? I'm sorry, December 4th, November 12th. Okay, the next item on the agenda is PC 2012-025, Chapter 1145 zoning text amendment.
Thank you. This is your question, Mr. Counselor, including girls. Uh, who's the agent for the property owner, RL and Barrow LLC, for the planning commission approval of a tax amendment to, of auto sales as a condition used in the C3 community retail district. Currently, auto sales and rental uses are only conditionally committed in C5 highway services district. The proposed amendments include changes to the three areas of the code. Add auto rental and sales as a condition used in the C3 and C4 districts. Increasing the minimum lot area and complete requirements, lot requirements. And also adding additional supplemental regulations in the 304. As a way of background, this was discussed as a study item of the 9/11, um, planning commission meeting. The proposed amendments would apply, um, to the current model of dealership as well as future auto sales and uses throughout C3, C4, and C5 districts of the city. Auto sales and rental is not currently committed in the C3 district. And in terms of our zoning code, uh, the applicant, the market dealership is considered illegal non-conform use. That is, the use was in existence prior to the zoning code. The, one of the issues that was brought forward by the applicant in our previous meeting was that that was limiting. And, um, this is correct, and you can check 1191, deals with non-conform uses does intend to limit non-conform uses. So, uh, unlike a use as permitted by right or a use as conditionally permitted, who can simply expand or improve their property with a site plan approval, this is not, uh, it's not as easy for, for a legal non-conform use. The, uh, what was discussed before was that, that the auto sales and still we have it just in one district was a little atypical compared to some other cities we looked at. Typically, they're more than one district in which that is permitted. Again, the request was added to the C3, but from staff's point of view, we also add to C4 since that's a, um, a more intense zoning district as well. So it would be committed in C3, C4, and C5. Again, uh, the development standards were enhanced so that, uh, again, to try to ensure development to good quality in terms of appearance, that is a larger lottery, so, uh, as well as some other specific conditions. Well, I'll get to it in a little bit. Uh, I wanted to, um, just, let's see, kind of, kind of go through the process. Again, this is a text amendment, uh, it's not a NAC amendment or a site plan request. Uh, so it, again, applies to the zoning code, um, for properties in C3, C4, and C5 districts. So the process for a text amendment is as follows. Uh, first is the planning commission recommendation that's, uh, potentially a piece of business item. Uh, second step would be a city council, planning committee, where it's discussed. Amendment is typically moved on to the full council for their consideration. It receives a first reading, uh, and a public hearing scheduled. Public hearing is scheduled and advertised at least 30 days prior to the public hearing. Then there's a second read with council. Then the public hearing is conducted, and then final, there's a final reading and then finally action by city council. So that's the, this is the first step in the, in the process of a text amendment. Just want to make sure that that was clear, that everyone, uh, go through the amendments now specifically. So, the first schedule we were talking about is 114502. Again, you see the bold Cs, which indicates that it's added, uh, to those districts, uh, to district uses. And then you can see the land, the, uh, minimum lot area was increased to 2 acres and a lot width to 300 feet. These are the supplemental regulations, uh, and again, so we've added the reference to the C3 and C4. We've also added a little, this just, this screening requirements in 114510D refers to the one adjacent to the central districts, uh, residential district. So, uh, that was a little more specific, again, when it's talked about, uh, making sure that it's screened, uh, storage area is screened for residential district. So that specifically references that. The, uh, so the 4, 5, 6, and 7 are the, uh, the other new additions to these supplemental regulations. One, uh, or number 4 was that it included a single building for sales or office activities. Again, as we discussed our study item, um, to avoid a kind of, a, a used car lot with no building, no way to prove it. So, you know, trying to enhance the quality of potential development. Then, uh, again, the, number 6, number 5 also talks about the, the area that's going to be used for sales or storage of vehicles should be paved with asphalt concrete, again, trying to enhance the appearance of any potential auto sales. Uh, outside loudspeakers shall not be permitted, uh, again, um, to minimize any good impacts. And then finally, the last one was areas for a vehicle display should be contaminated on the site. So, so when a site plan permit is, is proposed, then, um, they, they continue at the time where they display it. And, um, they couldn't be added unless, unless, uh, planning mission council approved it. So those are the proposed amendments. Staff is in support of these proposed amendments. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And some of the regulations, should we add lighting? Adequate, how do we approach your lighting?
We could, we do, uh, what's, you know, the, uh, lighting requirements in 1182 already cover that. Uh, there's specific maximums on the area of lighting, and in fact, has to be cut off shields and those sorts of things. So it's, this would be, 1182 would be in place for this, uh, any proposed site, any proposed auto sales. So I think it has covered.
We know what we're talking about here. I think this was scheduled. Where are those windows supplying to?
Well, there, it's, there are probably, it's, see, there's a, a total of 54, I think, parcels that are at least 2 acres in the area. There are C3, C4, and C5. So, uh, you know, Kent Road, there could be, you know, Kent Road is a possibility here. Good.
I think it's C5.
Yeah.
C5, Highway Streets.
That's what they're currently permitted. So C5 is, is, uh, at the highway entrance, is it, you know, it's like Grand Road, Steel's Corners and Hudson Drive is also a C5 area. So that, they, again, that could have, it could have.
Well, that's going around, I had another question just about, you know, we're talking about, you know, uh, loudspeakers are permitted. Is there any, uh, PC, easy for initial noise? I mean, we have, is our noise ordinance that's in place now sufficient to address like any other? I know we talked about many type of repairs, being indoors, you know, I guess that should keep the noise down, but I guess that's a serious concern, those are shallow, you know, this is a situation.
Well, our, as far as noise goes, I mean, any kind of noise issue probably would be addressed as, as a nuisance. Um, and, you know, right now, you, you, there's no, there's no specific noise ordinance as far as decibels or something like that. Typically, or literally between 11 and 11 PM, 11 and 7 AM is when, uh, the nuisance, noise nuisance kicks in. So, um, it would have to be addressed, and, you know, again, as a specific nuisance.
And if we're talking about conditional permitting, things would, uh, would likely be addition to this time.
It could, it could. You know, and the, our last discussion, we talked about, uh, um, repair activities, major repair activities going on in auto body. And again, uh, that would be classified as repair garage, which is only committed in I2. So you couldn't really have an auto body element to, uh, you know, to auto sales. It would not be permitted.
What are they talking about? What are they talking about on, um, favorite of 2 there? The cleaning, service, and then repair, what is repair included in?
Well, those are just minor repair. Like, uh, like right now, we have vehicle, um, it's considered minor repair, we define that. So that's just tire trouble, and, you know, minor things that, that plays on it. And it's always inside, right?
It's typical things that, uh, repair shop are doing, like screwing.
More like a, more like activities that, that a firestone might cause a little, uh, a tire shock. That's, whether it's minor or, yeah, or, um, not major repair. Not engine overhaul, so auto body, repair auto body, and so on.
Does this eliminate any services that, I don't know, that have occasion?
I wouldn't say, I would say, no, we're not. Our vehicle dealership, though, sometimes you get into some significant cap over here. I mean, not a body.
Good question.
But I think a lot of the rolling stone, I'm gonna say we can. Oh, I agree. That's a very good question.
Alright, so. They're kind of a faint purple, kind of a purple is what the, by the lots are identified. So this is Grand Road and Rowdy. I'll zoom in and maybe have that house. A lot, most of these, I mean, most, some of the lots are obviously occupied, but I mean, it could even, well, I mean, it could here, this could be the Stowe Falls Center. I've never seen one in that particular location, but it is pretty eligible for it. The Fort Carter Jones, as located, I mean, a lot of these sites have location issues, but I mean, again, it's, it's possible. The, now we're deep, I'm gonna send mine so you guys can see who we are. This is Steel's Corners, Hudson Drive. And again, some of these lots, you know, again, they're occupied now, but maybe need to be combined, but these are, these are two acre lots in C3 or C4 or C5. And then Town Center, another area with the, you know, areas where it's still, again, right here is C3, C4, and C5, at least two acres. And then Kent Road is probably the other area. Oh, like I said, we have a couple, couple sites there, this we can, Stowe Road. And then, now, this area here that, yeah, these, they're individual lots that may be less than two acres, I'm surprised it didn't come up.
Is there an issue that, if we should bring Stowe at one point in time, or a repair shop?
There was, there was a request for a, on that.
Just like you're saying, I believe.
Well, it, it, again, we're not talking about the same use, we're talking about auto sales, so.
That would kind of lump the shop.
So this is a, on that entire, higher area. So.
So it's, is staff's position that, that auto sales business is similar to other uses that allow, currently permitted in C3, C4?
I mean, the retail, it's a retail service, I mean, it certainly has, it's distinguished in that there's more outside activity and that there's display of vehicles, that would be a, in fact, other than that, it's a retail, probably less from a traffic turnover, less so than say, certainly less so than, you know, a gas station or a community store.
And I think we remember it's sales and service. Right, doesn't it have two services?
Right, right. So again, we have, the service has to be, you know, any servicing gains is inside service building. So that, if that's in place now, I think that needs to be enhanced some, but that's what I think is, having it inside, I think handles it.
If, I asked you there if George or Zank, um, Ford, do you have anything else to add? I guess we're just wanting to start.
I want to make sure what was assigned. Good evening, my name is John Slater, it's S-L-A-G-T-R. My address is 1375 East Ninth Street, Cleveland, Ohio, 44113.
Did you have anything to add, John, to your question?
I do. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm an attorney for law for Buckingham, New Little Burrows, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Marhauffer dealership, the property owner, which submitted the application, which is RLM Dero, comma LLC. And as you're aware, my client's property is located within a C3 district within the city. It has existed at its location since 1919, at least, an automobile type of facility in 1933, I believe that they began their new auto sales. And since that time, it's enjoyed a good relationship with the city. It's been, I think, an important part of the community. It is a large employer, in fact, my understanding, it's one of the oldest businesses in this community. And as you know, we were looking at alternatives for potential growth or otherwise, and during that process, some issues came up about the fact that my client's property is owned and designated it was known as a nonconforming use. And in looking at that, and looking at your particular code, there were some significant issues and concerns that had arisen as a result of that. Specifically, in chapter 1191, section 1191.01 of your code, it talks about the purpose for allowing nonconforming uses and ultimately what should happen to them. And again, this is a business of my client that's been located in this community for almost a hundred years. And your code provides that the legitimate interest of those who lawfully establish these nonconformities are here and recognized by providing for their continuous subject to regulations limiting their completion, restoration, reconstruction, extension, and substitution. Never the last, while it's the intent of this code that such nonconformity be allowed to continue until removed, they should not be encouraged to survive. So obviously, when we saw these types of very restrictive regulations, I was asked to look at, well, what does that mean from a legal perspective for my business that I've been operating in this community for almost a hundred years? Well, as a practical matter, if there are any alterations or improvements or otherwise, those alterations under your code would have to go through the process of being approved by Planning Commission also counseled with that. Any work that's done there is not permitted to exceed the aggregate cost of the assessed value, of the actual, the assessed value of the building or structure. Pretty significant from a renovation standpoint or otherwise. Second of all, if there's any extension, there's a pretty, an approval process that we have to go to an extension that you use. Then if there's any type of discontinuance or abandonment for six months, if there's a strike, if there's an issue with automotive supply companies or otherwise, for some reason, you know, even a, some type of disturbance that could cause, you know, a loss of business for a six month period of time, our, our use is automatically discontinued. Second of all, if there's damage or destruction to it, in the event, any building or structure devoted to nonconforming uses destroyed by means to an extent more than its assessed value, as determined by, for tax purposes by the county auditor, it shall not be rebuilt. So put yourself in a position of, you know, someone that's been operating a business that we're proud of in this community and finding that the zoning code not, does not permit my client's business to survive, and in fact, it's encouraged not to survive. And we thought that that's a practical difficulty that relates to this particular use. We're in a commercial district, we're at a main intersection, and we've operated there for at least since 1919. And therefore, we've approached this body and we're requesting that you approve of the text amendment. We ask this to be not a permitted use by right, but a conditionally permitted use. The proposed prescriptions that have been placed upon it are acceptable. Again, we're not asking for a map amendment, this is not changing the, your zoning map, it's simply changing your text to recognize a currently existing use that is within your community, it's been in your community for almost a hundred years. And we believe good zoning and planning principles should recognize that uses like this, that a part of the community should be encouraged to continue and not necessarily not really to die out. And I think that that's an important factor when you're looking at your zoning, or if you're really meet current uses. And I looked at your comprehensive plan and it talks about the intersection areas encouraging the retail type of uses. These types of facilities are in small or medium sized types of uses, they're not a large big box type of facility or otherwise. And I think that that is consistent with your comprehensive plan, encouraging a proper task base. We have many employees that work here, and it is fairly low impact from a traffic standpoint or otherwise. The reality is, is that what we're asking for is what currently exists to be recognized under your zoning as a legal use. And other than that, if there's any questions that you have, or the audience has, and we're here to answer those. Again, we thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you. Rock is, I have a question about history of this, do you know anything about why this was initially zoned C5? I mean, when, you know, Marhauffer's there, you know, it became a nonconforming use, I mean, Marhauffer, I think, are zoned so.
The, the, the use predates our zoning by several decades.
You don't know if there's any, if that, if, I guess, my question is?
Why wasn't it zoned by what you get?
Yeah, why?
It wasn't. No, when the zoning code was established, why didn't you zone four days?
Yeah, that's a decent question. May I ask about, maybe it's just a curiosity, if there's more.
Yeah, you know, I, because I, I don't know when it became not, I mean, presumably it was not going as soon as it, as soon as the zoning code was adopted, I think, in 1960, it was first adopted. I think, I guess I don't have a good answer of why it was never recognized or never.
Do you think it's just an oversight? Is that any of your thought, or is it, is it not something that was intended? Or you just don't know?
No, I, I probably don't think it's over here.
There's one other point, we did at one time have an auto body shop on that site, and we moved it actually in the industrial, it was up there. So there was, at one time, an auto body type of use facility, that's a lot conducted there. That was some discussion.
One other question, I just, while you're here, we saw a sudden claim from Marhauffer once ago, I guess now, is that, I guess, with this, knowing what they know now, is that, I guess my question is, would that be submitted under the current, the way the zoning code is set up, knowing what they know now? In other words, is this tax, or our zoning code, preventing improvements to the site from the owner's perspective?
I think that that, and again, I need to discuss it with my client, but my understanding of it, I was here at an official meeting, that that proposal was for a larger site, so it's not what we're here considering today, which I think it is. I mean, that was for them redoing that whole area. And that would require a de-zoning of other lots.
Yeah, I guess what, Chris is saying, I agree, this work, we're gonna open this up now for comments and from the audience. I do want to establish some round goals here, and first of all, I'm gonna try to limit it, individual comments to three minutes, that's sort of the council standard here. Certainly, definitely, we can't go beyond, I guess legally, we can't go beyond ten minutes. I would like for all the comments to be addressed to me, to the chairman, as opposed to addressing comments to individuals in the audience, so we don't get any chatter back and forth. And I'd like you to stay on topic. The topic tonight is the zoning text amendment. So this, we are not voting here tonight to change zoning of any residential lots to commercial, this is a completely separate vote for that. So, and in my mind, it's, I understand that there's a relationship between those issues, but it's a completely session, separate issue. In my mind, a vote to change the text amendment is not necessarily a vote, that doesn't mean that you're in favor or of, or support rezoning any residential lots to commercial. So I guess I'd just like to make that one clear. Um, I guess we'll start, maybe if I, yes.
Just repetitive, repetitive before and something, not all those people. I want something unique, I'd love it.
Yeah, well, we have, yes, we have, you know, we've, we had addressed, have been addressed, the commission has heard arguments before in the past regarding the zoning, that will be addressed, presumably it will be addressed at future meeting if it's brought before us, but that's not really what we're addressing here tonight. So we're looking to kind of stick on topic, on the topic of the text amendment, as opposed to the rezoning. Maybe what we'll do, I'm presuming there are more than a few people who would like to speak, maybe if I can just see a show of hands, if people would like to speak to this issue. If so, why don't we just, maybe we'll just do it as a group, maybe that's probably better. Why don't we, let everybody rise, if you want to speak on this issue at all tonight, for or against, if you think you might want to speak, rise now, just square in, if you don't want to decide against it, you know, I have to come up, so, they handle some of them.
Raise your hand, please. Do you sound like what you're about to say, Trace, so help you God?
I do.
If you can come forward and I'll have you state your name into the mic, I find all discussion just to be limited to us in the microphone here, so we can get everything in the eight minutes, eight minutes panel would appreciate that. And you can take the mic out if you want to. Why don't you move it in the angle to ask maybe the audience to speak to you?
My name is Michael Gordon, I'm an attorney with law firm authorities, State or Seymour and Peas. My office is located at 106 South Main Street in Suite 1100 in Akron, Ohio. And I represent the Burleys who resided in 1969 Thorndale. Now, they just bought a house there in April. The first thing I would like to do, sir is-
Can you bring up the map, Rob, of the street area?
Yes, they reside in 1969 Thorndale. And the reason I wanted to speak this evening is because I believe that every member of the Planning Commission received a memorandum from Attorney Hager with regard to the rezoning issue, which was 2012 map number eight. And it is not a coincidence that this text amendment had been asked for in the wake of that memorandum, because the law bars, bars in the state of Ohio, an extension of a nonconforming use to after acquired property. And that is why these issues are inextricably linked, with all due respect to you, sir. These are inextricably linked. And the reason we know that they're inextricably linked is because the revision is asked for after Mr. Hager's memorandum is made public to you, after the law is quoted to you with regard to the extension of nonconforming uses. And today, you are presented with this text amendment of general applicability to all C3, all C4, all C5, with no analysis from your own staff as to the impact on your city. You asked a very perceptive question, what about all the other areas in the city of Stowe? Where C3, and C4, and C5 properties exist, has the staff done any analysis of what the impact of this tax amendment would be on the city of Stowe? One interesting portion of your own code that was not read to you, and has been in low profile this entire time, is what is the purpose of these commercial regulations? Commercial district regulations, according to your own zoning code, says in 1145.01, this is the purpose. Commercial district regulations are established to ensure the availability of suitable areas for business and commercial uses, while at the same time promoting the most desirable and beneficial use of land that will protect the character and the value of residential neighborhoods within Stowe. What you're being asked to do, in a very refined fashion, is to toss your zoning code out the window so that a nonconforming use can be transformed by a tax amendment into a conditional use. And why is that important? Because if it becomes a conditional use, then the law does not bar it expanding into after required property. That is why we are here. We're not here because Mr. Marhauffer or anyone else is concerned about what happens to the other C3, C4, and C5 districts happening within Stowe. We're not talking about general applicability, we're talking about an animal called targeted zoning. That is what it's about. And how do we know that? Because when you do things that are contrary to your own comprehensive plan, then the courts will look at it and scrutinize it from the standpoint of targeted zoning. And how do we know that this is all inconsistent with your comprehensive plan? Well, we know that because the comprehensive plan that exists for Stowe in 2001 says, with regard to retail, the city should continue to confine commercial development because it's an important way of preserving the character of the city. Support expansion of existing retail areas only to a logical barrier, when the city determines that such extension will have a minimum impact on adjacent or nearby residential areas. That it will reinforce the retail choices available, and thus the quality of retail environment, and will allow for the redevelopment of older residential areas. What you're being asked to do, and you should not approve this to move on, you should stop this right now, nip it in the bud. Because what you're being asked to do is decrease the skids for an attempt to rezone residential lots for a parking lot for Marhauffer Chevrolet. Make no mistake about it, there is no pretense here, your own staff didn't do any analysis. This is designed to remove a legal barrier to the rezoning of those lots. And it is a direct contravention of what the purpose of commercial districts are. Why has this existed for so long? Because the people of Stowe and planning commissions like yourself zoned it C3. And they zoned it C3 with no auto sales and no storage of autos. Why is it there? Because it also, good people like yourself respected the entitlement of that business to remain where it had been. And that was a balance that was strong. Today is election day, and I am proud to be here because it's about the rule of law. It's about you protecting the small guy from the big guy. It's about you maintaining that balance. Do not be forestlogged here. This is about targeted zoning, this is about what is proposed back in September, and the attorney, so Mr. Marhauffer discovered, there is a legal impediment here, and we got to get around it. And if your staff really took this seriously, they would have been able to tell you exactly what the general impact of this change in the zoning code would be. The fact is, nobody really cares. Because we all know what's going on there. Nobody is fooled.
There was a previous meeting, I should just say, where the staff didn't address the issues on this text. There was a previous meeting, I should just say, where the staff didn't address the issues on this tax.
Well, I don't see any analysis here today when the commission asked a question.
What do you ask for your question? This man's business burrows for the ground. Okay, potential for him to rebuild.
That's correct. That's your law. That's not my law, that's the law of Stowe. That is the zoning code that exists now. There's nothing that prevents Mr. Mahoffer from doing business within the confines of his existing law. I'm not here to destroy Mr. Mahoffer's business. Nobody's here to do that. He is a good citizen, he contributes a lot to this community. But I am also here to defend my clients who are property owners. And guess what? The city of Stowe says in its comprehensive plan more than 100 times the privacy of single family residents, protecting the value and integrity of neighborhoods. This neighborhood dates in the 1920s. The house that the Burley's moved into is rebuilt in 1925. So there are real considerations here and with all due respect to the commission, there is a real connection here. It is not a coincidence that you are being asked for this tax amendment after Mr. Mahoffer's attorneys are alerted to the fact that they are barred by law from moving into after required property. So I want, when I leave here today, I want to ask you if in fact this is truly a tax amendment of general applicability and is not targeted zoning, then you need to do further analysis to determine what is the real impact on your community is. And I don't think you're gonna, you're gonna get that back. Because I think what really is going on here is a legal maneuver to get over a legal impediment and go back and start over again on what the real issue here is. And that is the rezoning of 1941, 1947, and 1955.
Do you not deny that there are existing impediments to Mahoffer that are underweighting the expansion to the other lots, the rezoning of the other lots? In other words, there are impediments to his business that are created by our zoning code that were mentioned by the other attorney that don't have anything to do with expanding his business to residential lives?
And that's because good people like yourselves on the planning commissions for decades, as you said, there's no mistake that this is a, a, a nonconforming use. They have struck the balance. Do you want the whole center section, which is zone C three and C four around your town center to be an auto market? Because that's the impact of which we're talking about. That whole area in here, this whole area is zone C three. This whole area right here, it's all zones E three. And this is even half of it, it extends out here. Are we saying the centerpiece of the city of Stowe is an auto dealership? I just want to make sure that it's absolutely clear that we are asking you do not let this go forward. If it is worthy of further consideration, let's get the facts on the table. But let's not allow a, a, a targeted zoning ever masquerade as a tax amendment. Because it's not. Somehow, Mr. Mahoffer has functioned all these years with a nonconforming use. Why does he want to change it now? If this is such a terrible code that you've written for the city of Stowe, how come he's managed to be here all these years? The reason is because it works. It's a good balance. So I will, I'm sorry, I've taken too much of your time, but I, I want basically with all due respect, to make these two because they are absolutely intertwined. Absolutely. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else who would want to just? If you can raise your hand to come forward, I'll square you in. Oh, I'm sorry, I just need your name and address.
Mary Ryan, 1961 Thorndale, LA. Um, I just wanted to expand a little bit on what he said, um, absolutely about checking this. You guys remember, I've stood up here two previous, I know we're not making a decision here, but I'm the one who went to the lawyer and said, this is a C five according to our own zoning code. And yet at those meetings, we were told now it's a C three. So I think it's pretty much proven that this is very arbitrary, which is not what the zoning code is about. And my question is, because it's not up there now asking it. The difference is in a C five is 45 feet away from my property. I'm the closest property to ones he's purchased. 45 feet away as opposed to 10 feet away in a C three. The difference from the buildings coming across from the street is also 10 feet compared to 20 feet. So I think it's a little coincidental, just like previously said, that all of a sudden we want to change the entire code. It's opening up Pandora's box. It's just a new version of eminent domain. You're going to allow anybody who could go into a residential neighborhood, find someone in foreclosure, find someone who has no scruples, find someone who's in financial difficulty, buy their property now to C three. And before you know it, we have all these new uses. Two weeks ago, I went and spoke to the mayor and I asked her, does the planning commission and the city of Stowe council, do they no longer appreciate the fact that Kent Road is an old neighborhood? Most of the homes dated back to the 1920s like my own. Is that the intention of our own city to wipe out vacant commercial? I worked in retail management for 20 years. Too many companies have built for no reason, wrong or reason, and now they're out of business. We need to be very astute about what we allow into Stowe so that we don't have vacant properties. Am I against Ron Mahoffer? Absolutely not. I'm one of those residents that when he lost his dealership, I said, listen, GM, he's a good business. He needs to stay in Stowe. But not at the expense of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. Karen Fritsch, 3956, Redwood Circle. Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Seems a little funny to be on this side of the microphone, but I'm very glad to be here. Uh, I wanted to make a few remarks in support of Ron Mahoffer's request. I've had 20 years' experience in Stowe city government. Twelve is on city council and four is, or four, eight, just see my four. Uh, eight as mayor of the city of Stowe. And obviously, I love the community and I want to see what's best for the community. We have, over the years, in response to the gentleman who spoke previously, many times we've rezoned, did a lot of rezonies for various reasons. And it has not negatively impacted the city of Stowe in the ways that he's talking about. We've had, um, I remember, uh, we had on Graham Road, there was a C three zoning and we changed it back to a C six, which only, it restricted zoning. And people were kind of angry about that, but it was one of the best things we did for our city because instead of having a bunch of retail all along Graham Road going into Cairo Falls, it is now office for Dr., Dr. Davis, Dr. Wolf, the dentist and so forth. So I think that was really helpful. And we did that, um, over complaints of the people who own stores there. So I'm just saying, rezoning happens all the time. It's not anything that's unusual. And I wanted to say a couple of things which, over the years, I found that are true. The residents living on Thorndale, Hawthorne, and Margaret have the right to be concerned about these changes. I, I understand that because it's their home, it's their biggest investment that they have. And anytime there's change, you always worry about what are these changes going to mean to me and my house and where I live. And I, I have walked that area many times. I was the whole council person. I also walked it before, when I was there. And it is, it is a very lovely neighborhood and I see why you want to keep it as it is. But I think that can happen along with the changes that Mr. Mahoffer wants to make. Secondly, I know if Ron Mahoffer is made aware of problems as you go through the process, he will do his best to take care of the problems. In July 1988, and I have this whole book because every time I got a complaint or concern, I kept track of what it was and what that owner did about it. So this is my own first book, it's from 1988. And I got a call from somebody who lived on Thorndale and they were concerned about the noise of the, now it won't be loudspeakers, but the loudspeakers at the time, lights also from Mahoffer Chevrolet. And I had a meeting with Ron Mahoffer. And he said he would do everything he could to, so the speakers wouldn't be loud and he changed the lighting and he did it immediately. And sure enough, I talked to the neighbor a couple of times after that and the problem was taken care of. And also after the, um, the horrible flooding that we had in 2003, 2004, there are issues in that area. And I found that Ron Mahoffer always stepped up to these issues and did what he had to do to rectify it. So I find him a man of great integrity. And if he says he's going to do something, he will do it. And thirdly, um, I believe that there's a way to allow for the expansion or the changes of Ron Mahoffer Chevrolet and not have the neighborhood negatively impacted. And that, the reason I say that is because I've seen it happen time and time again over the years. There have been a lot of changes to neighborhoods due to, a lot of times, new construction. And I think this is even an easier, um, excuse me, it's a little bit easier with Ron Mahoffer Chevrolet because it has been an existing business. Sorry, come on, please. And some of these constructions and expansions and new constructions were very similar to this situation. They were adjacent to existing neighborhoods. For example, and this is one that I, when I first was on council, was a huge problem for the neighbors. There's a lot of concern and a lot of anger. And that was when Briarwood was built. Because they really had concerns about ambulances coming in and out. A lot of people coming, a lot of trucks, traffic, loading and unloading and so forth. But once it's been built, the neighbors love it. I'm just saying, they really find it to be something that's advantageous to their neighborhood. They found that Briarwood is a good neighbor. And I've been told this, I'm not sure it's true, but some people who lived in that area are now residents of Briarwood. Now, I don't know really if that's true, but that's what people are hoping. So the people really, they've gotten along and they've been able to coexist and coexist peacefully. The library expansion, when that went through, caused a lot of angst among a number of residents. And again, it worked out. The construction of the Marx Plaza, once Mark, once the workman building went down, that caused a lot of problems. And actually, what, when that neighbor, when that site went in, the Marx Plaza, they really did a lot with storm drain, storm drains for people who had problems and made it better for them. So it was a positive for a lot of people. There's also when John Eagle went in, there was a lot of concerns of people and right behind it at Rockport and so on. As you can see, this is not anything that's new that happens. It's happened to this city many, many times. And what we've been able to find out is that the two, the residential area and a commercial area can coexist, it coexists where everyone is satisfied. And the reaction of the neighborhood is usually the same. But what is important is the neighborhood is still intact and property values do not go down. And it is what's best for the city as a whole. And you might wonder why there's not this negative impact on the neighborhood, but there are good reasons. Part of it is our planning department. They look to see and they study what can be done to make it minimal of an impact for the neighborhood. And the other big reason is really planning commission. Because when the site plan comes in, they have to study this plan and see how they can minimize and actually improve the conditions for the neighborhood, which has happened. I've seen it happen over the years. So it's a positive, it's a big job for planning commission and planning department. But it is something that has been done in the past. The owners and the developers are required to provide good offers, which are attractive and protective. And they have lived up to these responsibilities over the years. The system has worked. Businesses and neighborhoods coexist in a peaceful and positive manner. But it needs to be worked out. It's not always an easy road. It's something that has to be worked on with very deliberate intent. And lastly, with the improvements that Mr. Mahoffer is improving, I really can vision a more attractive, well, will be a more attractive building. And with more green space, better landscaping for the residents who live right by and for the city as a whole. What really concerns me is if this, and I, I don't know, I haven't talked to Mr. Mahoffer about this at all, but if it doesn't work out and that, and Mahoffer Chevrolet leaves the community and the property becomes vacant, that is a huge concern for me and many other people in the community. I've heard it over and over again. Be more concerned, what if he leaves that property? As we have seen places like Stow Tech Shopping Center, which to be honest, I've worked on for eight years trying to get that property improved. And a lot of times, it's not easy to do. You have a vacant, almost a vacant property there and it's a problem. So I just, I'm not trying to threaten or, I'm just trying to face reality. And, and looking at some of the vacant properties in the city, it is a problem. It really is a problem. So I think we should not look at this change as something that will be negative, but something that we should work on together to make it a positive for the city. I think it can be. I don't, I don't think it has to be one way or the other. I think it can be a good thing for, for everyone. I think it could be good for Ron Mahoffer Chevrolet. I think it could be good for the neighborhood. I've seen it happen before and I know it can happen again. It's not easy, it takes a lot of work, but it can happen. And I also would never like to see Ron Mahoffer leave the community because he is a great community supporter. So, thank you very much. All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else who can come forward and speak to you?
Right, this time. Terry Yang, 3425, Margaret Avenue. With all due respect to the former mayor, um, we don't, we're the ones that are going to be living next door to a car dealership. None of the properties she spoke about are car dealerships. We're the ones that will be living next door to a car dealership. A couple of things I'd like to say is, um, I've been out with my granddaughter in the front yard of the property across the street from me, it's currently for sale, when people drive around and looked at the property. And I've had two of them stop and ask me what the rezoning is about. So I explained it to them. And one of the women's reaction was, oh, that's too bad. And one of the women's reaction was, oh, that's too bad. This is such a nice neighborhood. I would never consider buying this home with a car dealership. Two houses away from me. So it's going to affect our values of our homes.
You're talking about rezoning the rest of the area.
Everyone else has been talked about, talked about rezoning. I'm just saying, she, you know, she talked about it's not gonna affect the values of our home. I mean, it did differ. I've had experience with people telling me that they're not gonna buy those properties.
But I'm just trying to clarify your, your opinion that rezoning and rezoning lots could be a problem.
Yes, well, here's, here's what I think. I don't want Ron Marhauffer to leave. We went down and signed his petition, just like others. Our neighbors did. Surely, surely, there is a way to give him most of what he wants, whether it's by variances or exceptions, so that if anything would ever happen to this dealership, he could rebuild it on his current footprint. Giving the con, my only concern with Yukon is that you address the safety of the children at India Trail Break School because you are going to have traffic through there. That's my, my concern with that, I've seen that. Giving Yukon, you know, he doesn't have to have those residential lots. He could do it on the property he has. Eventually, he'll probably give Jiffy Lube, maybe even the pizza parlor. So it can be done, it can be done. And I don't think there's a resident here that want, that live near him that want him to leave. We just want him to have compassion and understanding for what, how we feel that it's going to affect us. And I do, I do resent the idea that if he doesn't, isn't given what he wants, he's going to leave. I think that's holding the city hostage. I think that's a terrible precedent to set that you grant him what he wants because he threatens to leave. You know, that's a terrible...
I understand, he has lots.
Okay, well, I'm just saying.
Please don't do that.
Okay, I'm saying though, it was brought up in the previous that they would hate to see him leave because of this. That's all I'm saying. I have here the Stotat Comprehensive Plan, pamphlet that was given out. Some of it has already been stated. Just a couple of things I'd have to read out this night, okay? Future development should occur in locations in Indiana that minimizes adverse impacts on existing residential areas, particularly avoiding incompatible land use relationship and minimizing an increase in traffic on local as well as major residential streets. This says that the vision of comprehensive plan is a continuation of the policy direction established in the nineteen ninety-one plan. Stowe continue to be a residential community of quality neighborhoods where retail and commercial uses are concentrated in specific areas. No problem with him wearing that. He doesn't need to barrel into a residential.
You're not taking a point, he's already into a residential area.
No, well...
Come on, he is...
He's at the end of the street. He's not...
Outside, I mean, or he was there before, he was there before they went apartment buildings.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
If there's a little word for it now today...
I don't want to see you do something so that he, there's got to be some way...
So then you are in favor of this change?
No, I am not in favor of variance or...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, you can't have variance, wait a minute. There is no variance on this. So what you're saying is in order for him to rebuild a broken-down building, legally, he cannot do that with this. He needs that to be rezoned so that he could do that and be able to fire. That's what we're, that's what this is about.
Whether this is used later...
Well, here's my response to that.
Because you are in favor of this.
No, I am not, no. Here's my response to that. As they showed, there are many areas in Stowe that would be conducive to Mr. Marhauffer's establishment. Carter Lumber is a perfect example, he's on a highway. Carter Lark, Carter Land. If this is so important to him because it's been in his family so long, let him build his office there on that land.
That's such a commonality.
But you understand my point. There are, there are other places that would be conducive to a car dealership. That, I am not, no, I am not in favor of, I, I personally, because I don't know laws and zoning codes, I thought there would be some way to grandfather in him to be able to replace what he has if something happens without changing his zoning code.
There is one.
Without changing the zoning code.
That's what we're part of. That's how you do it.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? Would you like to say? Does anybody else?
I think this is Joseph Crowell of the nineteen sixty-four area. I think the bottom line here is that we don't want him coming in the neighborhood. He has bought a house there already, okay? And we don't want those three houses being, we don't want him coming in the neighborhood to take down trees that are eight years old, I believe they're twenty-five years. We really don't know the dealership is there until you have a street. You know, we don't know it's there. But the bottom line is he wants to put a park in on there. If we zone this, he's gonna take that, he wants to do it there. Take that, because he owns that property. Yes, he definitely wants to do with this. And if he does that, it's gonna come to the neighborhood. If he does that, he will come in the neighborhood, put a proposal like he did before, remember the last time? Did you put that proposal?
He's a lot, a lot like you.
I didn't say he didn't. I'm just saying, if you zone that, then it's gonna make it a lot easier for him to do it.
It's not a zoning, it's a change that exists.
Whatever.
Not changing something.
Whatever you want to call it, whatever you want to call it.
I guess it's not changing anything on any residential lots in the city. We're not changing anything. Well, and I understand that there's a...
That's what he said, yeah.
I understand that...
It's not changing anything yet. Therefore, you need an impediment at the bottom.
I'm just saying, approving this doesn't approve that. One doesn't necessarily lead to the other. There's a separation issue. And there are reasons...
And to have revolved Mrs. Trishville? Those are existing properties there, that was an existing property. Were they likely to be an existing property? I mean, you are going in and you're in the neighborhood. Those are streets now.
Next, this text amendment is to improve that large or small, it's not already...
Can you guarantee it?
Well, I can guarantee, I can guarantee that this text amendment is improving it now to the extent that it's not what it is. But not...
All right. Now, if it goes like that, it's...
He's bad on the end. He owns the house then. Okay. Would you require a sub or what?
I agree. And it's gonna take so many years and everything, but if we get a picture, he won't be able to do that. I love that he's gonna be in town.
I think it's not that... Be there now is a test distance.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna come to the neighborhood. I'm telling you right now, it's gonna come to the neighborhood.
All right, thank you. I wanna let everyone else, some kind of person.
My name is John Trusso, twenty-six, twenty-seven Rogers Park. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to come in tonight. I wanna comment, number one, both for my support of this tax change for not only the purpose of supporting the Marhauffer family, but for personal reasons. I currently own industrial park, that's what, or industrial zone land over by the Hudson Drive Steel's Corners area. I'm looking at purchasing other additional land in that area and concerned now about the restrictions that I'm hearing about regarding that particular land in terms of if I were to build a building that would be approved by the building and zoning department, would I be able to recover that asset if it were destroyed in a tornado or destroyed in a, you know, a flood or some such thing? So this amendment that you're trying to discuss to not support the Marhauffer's family will also potentially affect my business. So number one, I have the utmost respect for the family. They've been here since the early nineteen hundreds, as everyone knows. They were here long before the proposed move into these neighborhoods, the neighborhoods that is, that is being affected potentially. I understand the passion on both sides of this, but the bottom line is, they're trying to improve the business. They're trying to enhance the neighborhood. They're trying to enhance the property values as opposed to simply picking up and rebuilding and moving someplace else. And I'm sure that all parties can work together to resolve this particular issue, but in the process of changing this tax amendment, you're potentially affecting my business also. So I appreciate the fact that you're, you're discussing this and it's not just a targeted zone change to affect this property, it will enhance other business owners throughout the community. And we need to keep businesses in this community for the task base, for the support of the community, and not chase them out of town or have them move to some other adjacent community. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chair, plenty of information. Did the gentleman just spoke, purchase a non-conforming use property? Or did he, or, because it sounds like there's a total misunderstanding about...
Just to clarify, yeah, these only, this, this text amendment only affects our zoning areas C three to C four, not those related.
So the issue about preventing somebody from rebuilding is only applicable to those issues that are non-conforming use and does not affect any of C three, C four, C five property?
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else, sir?
My name is Steve Masiata, address nineteen forty-one Thorndale Avenue. Yeah, I would like to address as far as this code change, that I, I do support this code change in order for Mr. Marhauffer to continue to be a successful business here in Stowe, Ohio. He needs this code to be changed, obviously. And I feel it would be imperative for his business and for the city of Stowe to keep him and to maintain the business that he has made over these hundred years that he's been in Stowe. And I definitely support that code change in order for that to happen. But, you know, as far as him moving into another C three area, and I'm not quite understanding the gentleman who spoke earlier, as far as why would you create another empty lot to create another business somewhere else when you have another empty space? I mean, that's what we don't want. We have a man that's been in this neighborhood for years, and he's asking for a simple, you know, it's not a simple thing, but he's asking for, in order for him to succeed, he needs this to happen. And I would implore you to find a way or a solution to make this happen for Mr. Marhauffer and for his family. He's, I believe he's doing this for the future of Stowe also with his children that are involved with this business. I feel that he's setting this up for the family to succeed in future years and for the city of Stowe. So I think it'd be very beneficial for this code to be changed. And, you know, also, I would implore you also to look into this neighborhood and look at the property values that are there. You know, this neighborhood, and we live, and we live next door to Mr. Marhauffer for the last eleven years. He's been an excellent neighbor. There's been no complaints from us to Mr. Marhauffer. We live directly beside him, there is no bar, there's a fence, and that's it. We have some trees that go down there, the lighting's there. So as far as any noise issues, as far as any lighting issues and things like that, no complaints, it's been fine. So I don't see that being an existing problem in the near future at any point. They will, you know, I'm sure take care of that.
Do you write this in nineteen forty-one?
Correct, that's correct.
You've been in eleven years.
That's correct. If you look at our street on Thorndale, even if I cross from my address, the two houses that sit directly across from me are vacant. The one has not been lived in since two thousand and three, as far as I can remember. It's owned by a gentleman who lives in Monroe Falls. That house sits empty. The house directly next to it, the residence there lives in another state. She has not been there this entire year. I live directly across the street next Stevens. That house sits empty. The house directly beside me is in foreclosure, pretty full foreclosure. You know, part of this, part of this plan of Mr. Marhauffer, so I, and off the street at the very end is another vacant home. So I see this as an improvement into our neighborhood, not as a taking away from it. So if you look at it, I would implore you to find, if you look at the property values there, I think you may be surprised. So, and I believe by this expansion happening, it's not gonna take away from it, it's gonna improve it, okay? There is no danger to its children, I believe, by this happening. As far as him expanding or building onto this property, I can see any reason why this would be in any way, any danger to the children that are on the street. I have two young children that live there on the street. There would be, there is no unit donate that's gonna happen here. Nobody's houses are being taken from them. So any of that donate does not play into this, which was mentioned earlier, and that's not the case. As far as Mr. Marhauffer is supporting the community, I think we all realize how he supports this community and we all ashamed to see him leave if that were an option for him, which clearly is an option for him. We do want him to stay. And I think his fear, as far as my wife and myself, is not losing the possibility and the potential of having a sale of our house. Our fear is having an empty lot sitting directly beside us. That will be detrimental to our neighborhood. It will bring down property values. That'll be a property value decrease for everybody. It will not be good for anyone in the city of Stowe. So, yeah, I appreciate taking the time and, you know, like I said, I'd implore you to look at the street closer and then see what the property values are there. And go from there. Thanks for your time.
Let me put a point real quick.
I wanna make sure everyone's had an opportunity to speak before we put it on the table. Karen Truchan, nineteen seventy-four Thorndale Avenue, Stowe. I'm curious why when someone comes up to speak for the rezoning of the resident-owned project properties, it's brought to our attention that that's not what this meeting is for. When Karen took that up and spoke, no one said anything. When Mr. Masiata got up for the change, you know, it's, Mr. Manalyn was very, you know, not that nice, pointing out to Mrs. May that that's not what we're here for and that's not what we're discussing. And since Karen brought it up, I feel I can go ahead and discuss the values of our properties. I'm a real estate agent and still for six years now, I can tell you when I show someone a home that's next door to a commercial property or that's across from it, that it's going to affect the value and someone that wants to, you know, get a bigger house for less money, that might appeal to them to live across the street or next door, but it is in fact going to affect our values. Those of us that are in front, I'm at nineteen seventy, the Mr. Marhauffer's house would be across the street from us, it will affect our property values. And the only reason is because it already, everyone else has brought it up that this would be an idea.
Is this one?
Yes.
I guess I hadn't heard that. But I guess when I was hearing people speaking in favor, that I hadn't heard them speaking in favor of the expansion. I was listening to them talk about being in favor of the tax amendment.
I misunderstood, and I apologize. That's all I can say, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If not...
Just a, just a couple of things. I'd like to make it, you know, that Mr. Marha, I'm sorry, I butcher your name, Mr. Masiata, whatever, saying, I'm sorry, I don't know what you're... He's wanting to benefit monetarily by this deal. Just wanted to make that point. And his question about children at risk, I'd like to...
And his question about children at risk, I'd like to explain that. If you take UConn and give it to Mr. Marhauffer, which I'm fully in favor of, believe me, as long as you address the issue, because people are going to try and cut off the corner, so they're going to come up on Dorndale, and they're going to cut through a school parking lot. That's my concern, is those children at that school, of those people that are going to try and cut the corner. You know, and it will increase the traffic on Dorndale. There is no doubt of that. I've seen it happen previously when UConn's been closed off. We already have people that cut through this school. That will just increase. And the other point I'd like to make is they chose to live next door to a car dealership. They moved in to... Next door to a car dealership. You... This... We do this, you're taking that choice away from us. It was my choice for us.
I just want to add, nineteen forty-two, it is not a vacant property. That is owned by a lady, she's a project manager.
We can't make the other amendments, talking into the lines.
I just wanted to add that...
Say your name.
I just wanted to add that the property in nineteen forty-two is not a vacant property. It's owned by a single lady, has a project manager that travels all the time, so that's a lot.
Okay. Thank you. Is there... Anyone?
Yeah, I promised that nineteen forty-two, yes, it is a vacant property. And yes, if you go by there tomorrow night, tomorrow, whatever night, you'll see that there's nobody in there. You'll see that Joe maintains the yard there, and the yards are maintained. However, the person who owns the home is not residing there. She hasn't been there this entire year.
Yes, she has.
Just so you know. Thank you.
I mean, it's not important. Thank you. Um, I think if it's heard from anybody, there's any other...
You know, I will tell you, this text amendment is before us. And we have two attorneys here that are representing opposite sides. And their jobs are to do what they have to for opposite side because they were hired to do that. And I tell you, this is tough, but I will tell you, I support the text amendment because it's before us. There's no proposal, there's no site plan before us. And the way I'm looking at this is if this man's business burns down tomorrow, he could rebuild it. And you guys can twist it all you want, but that's the way I look at it. And if you have a site plan, it's before me or a proposal, because I really have a feeling on that one too, which I hold to myself. Now, it's ironic that we have a text amendment that is coming before us with this big proposal that General Motors is pushing Mr. Marhauffer. But, you know, that's... That's what we have to decide on tomorrow. It's not reasonable.
Chris, I'd like to build on that, that I agree with what you're saying, but I also have to say, there's a comment made, these two issues really are linked, and, you know, we have to recognize, but in fact, they are linked. But I think that the people in the city have to trust, there's much thought and discussion that has gone into this document will also go into a proposal that comes before us. And that, you know, when these type of issues come, they come and they go, they go back and forth. We look at curb cuts, we look at buffers, and we will look at that, if in fact they are linked, which they likely are, we will look at those things again and make sure that the neighborhood does notice for the dealership, that quite frankly, was there prior to any of the homes or on the market. So we will look at that. If when it comes, I'm thinking a lot of, you know, they went here, bought a new or a big person, eleven years, that they bought, and it would be a shit dealership. If those homes were...
They're three houses away, which are proposing a place... I just want to... I have one question. You, I think at the previous meeting, I mentioned, addressed something regarding auto codes in the area and how they're dealing with auto dealerships and what zones they're all have. Can you just go over that one more time?
Yeah, we talked about looking at the zoning codes. Typically, ones that I sample, a lot of auto dealerships in more than one district. Some of the conditions that came that were proposed here were versions of some of those conditions. So I tried to look at some other best practices as far as the... Well, I'll speak, for example, that came out, some of those other conditions. Again, knowing that, knowing that we're going to increase the number of lots that a auto dealership could be committed in, we also wanted to enhance the conditions for those, that is, increasing the lot area. So again, to try to ensure that dealership is going to be a higher quality and so that the area, the minimum lot area, minimum lot, which, you know, those extra self-manual conditions were all intended to minimize any impacts on the residential area.
All right, thanks, Rob.
Yeah, I heard that spoke first, based on city allegations regarding our zoning code regarding the comprehensive plan regarding classes, went through developing this zoning change in the community. Yes. I'd like to know if the attorney representing Marhauffer has any response to that. If we do, we'll have to make sure it survives and doesn't go over the term.
Sure, sure. The... I mean, there was an allegation about the targeted zoning, or claims as was targeted. First of all, it's John Slater, I represent, I'm a property owner, so that the application. And I understand this is a legislative function. There's a proposal for this body to recommend, your council, this legislative change of the zoning text. It's not administrative, that's why. I didn't, like a variance hearing or something like that, with a cross-examination, things along those lines. I was respecting each thing that just came up, and I know that this body deals with this all the time. I did provide a counsel's voice for that purpose, but since you gave me the opportunity to do that, first of all, you know, this is a citywide modification, so it's not targeted to a particular site. And we... And your code provides for the right of Mr. Marhauffer, the right of other property owners, any property owner, to request either a text amendment, which is what's before you, or a zoning change. It doesn't mean you're bad, or there's something wrong with it, or there's some other reason for it. I mean, you're allowed to do it. That is the process, that rule of law, election night that we're talking about. That's exactly what we're here for tonight. And, you know, the same allegations that we made about the planning department, no study, I saw no study presented to us. I know that counsel for the property owner in, what is it, nineteen sixty-nine, I believe? I mean, his client moved there, okay? And we're talking about an auto dealership that currently exists, and there's people that live there. The reality is, is that, you know, I was under making comments about the expansion of this dealership. I was telling you that it was recognized when we went through the process, that clearly your provision of your code as it relates to non-conforming use is very restrictive. I've been doing zoning law for twenty-one years. When I read it, I explained to my client that this is a very restrictive provision, probably one of the most restrictive I've seen. And it created some concern, and I explained what that meant. You know, clearly, my client's business or otherwise, I mean, we may be back for an expansion of the use. I mean, we may be back, but there's a process that you have to go through. We'll abide by that process, but I mean, as we're sitting here now, we don't have that before you. I think that, you know, we're dealing with an existing problem that's there. So I believe from a legal standpoint, there's nothing wrong with going through the process. It's a note, it's... The hearing's been noticed, it's an area-wide change. The Congress of Planings has been cited, and you can go through, and you can pick one section out or another section out. I reviewed it also, and I looked at it, and it talks about considering a tax base. It talks about your existing retail and the existence of your existing retail and the interceptions, including this area, which is study area, M, they call it, in this particular interception, and, I mean, the existing commercial uses continuing and those being encouraged. I mean, obviously, the reason you have conditional uses is to make sure as things change, you look at the impact site-specific, and that's a whole different process. So from a legal standpoint, the allegations that have been made, there have been a lot of them. I know there's been allegations in the newspaper and all these other things about your proprieties. And the reality is, is that we're here, we're a longtime member of the community, we're going through the legal process, and it's a pretty simple issue. And, you know, I don't think we need to get into the other issues about what may happen down the road. We are ready to ask for this. We see a problem that's before us. And I think there's nothing inappropriate or incorrect, and I know illegal about it. I've, again, been doing zoning law for twenty-one years, I represent some governmental entities. There's nothing wrong with the process that we're going through, and I think that this makes a lot of planning sense. And we agree with your staff and your, the expert staff that's in this city, when they go look at this issue, and they're the ones that came up with these restrictions that were there. We didn't come up with them, they came up with them. And again, I think we have an appropriate proposal as before you. Thank you for the opportunity to respond.
I'm assuming you have anything else to add? I'm pretty much all received. I have another comments on the commission numbers I want to make.
I would move that we approve the D-2012-Lash or D-25 with the text supplemental regulations that would be attached to the change in the C-three four business code.
How's that motion? The motion's been made, the second is under discussion. If not, we'll take the roll call down. Mr. Coleman? Yes. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Spronk?
Yes.
Okay. There are few more steps that's approved or down, those before council, these are the planning maybe comes first, ten, and then two means of council. The next meeting, the next meeting, the next session.